Thank you all for coming. I'm Jamie Webb, I'm the Assistant Planner here. And we are meeting tonight to talk about the FY 2018 Community Development Block Grant. We're doing a performance hearing on that grant and the FY 2020 application to Community Development Block Grant program. With me tonight is Ted Harvey from Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, Dan Raciney from CDU East Hampton, Staff Engineer, and Jeff Bagman. So there's going to be a format tonight. There are actually going to be two public hearings, it's going to be back-to-back. There are two sign-in sheets, so hopefully everyone signed into both when they came in. If not, there'll be plenty of opportunity. That just shows to the Department of Housing and Community Development that we have some people present and with our public outreach. There are also some handouts up front if you do not have a chance to get them, grab them and get up. We're also being video recorded, just so everyone's aware. And I'm going to talk a minute about the 2018 Community Development Block Grant, and then we'll turn it over to Ted. He'll go on with some more details. So the 2018 -- so I'm going to first actually open the public hearing. The 2018 Block Grant was -- we received $798,000 from the Mass Department of Housing and Community Development for basically two programs. One was the Admiral Street Neighborhood Infrastructure Improvement Program, and the other was a continuation of the Housing Rehabilitation Program. The Admiral Street Infrastructure Program consisted of four phases of construction. The first phase was completed in 2018, which is this green area up top. The second phase, 2018 grant, was substantially complete this fall. We're still undergoing punch list items for that program, for that section in blue here, consisting of North Hampshire Street, Clark Street, Olympia Street, and Admiral Street. And the majority of the work consisted of drainage improvements, sewer line replacement and improvements, road resurfacing, sidewalks, and associated surface improvements. The contractor for that -- that the work was JL Raymakers &amp; Sons, and Pioneer Valley Planning Commission oversaw the administration of that piece of it, and our engineers were Lennard Engineering. So if there's anything Ted or Dan that you'd like to say about the construction project that's wrapping up?
No.
Okay. We'll open up to questions in a minute. The other piece of the 2018 grant was the Housing Rehab Program. We used program income funds, which were recaptured funds from previous Community Development Block Grant programs. For instance, when someone pays back a loan, it goes back to a set of funds that can only be used for other community development block grant related activities. We had about $108,000 under the program income to support approximately four units of housing rehab. One project has been completed. There are three that are underway, and we expect them to be complete by the middle of the summer.
Do you want to jump up?
Yeah.
Okay, so I don't really have much to add, but I just wanted to say a little bit more about the CDUG program in general. Do people know about this program? Show hands, does anyone? So it's a federal program in general, and most, if you hear CDUG, it's usually in regards to the federal program. And entitlement communities like Springfield, Holyoke, they get money directly from HUD. They bypass the state, they get money directly from HUD. There's also a small cities program, and that's where East Hampton comes in, and the state, the Commonwealth in this case, gets money and then basically runs the same type of program for smaller communities with $50,000. And that is a competitive program, and that is not automatic. The entitlement communities, they automatically get this money every year as long as Congress appropriates it. Maybe not, maybe not. But, so that's what we're working on. So it's a competitive program. So every year, we have to put in an application. For a number of years, the city had a staff person in the planning department, and then when she retired, the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, which is where I work, we've been doing this for 30 years. We kind of jumped in, at least temporarily, for the couple of years to see, and then we'll see where it goes after that. So money-wise, you're allowed to apply every year, as long as any town that doesn't get entitlement money gets to apply every year. It's a 1.35 million cap over two years, so however you break that up. So you can apply for a certain amount one year, and then the difference the next year. The only caveat is that your max, your cap, is $800,000. So that's the most you can apply to only one year. So if you apply $800,000 one year, you're at $555,000, or whatever it is that's involved. And you can obviously apply for less if it doesn't happen. So a question sometimes comes up is, why is this broken into 1,700 different phases? Because there's only so much money we can put into these infrastructure projects, and they progressively get more expensive every year for various reasons that we don't really have a lot of control over. So that's the kind of -- and this and every other time we work with us, why we phase in these projects. So that's CDUG in a nutshell. So the other thing I wanted to mention was, so this is the performance hearing for the FY 18 grant. So at the moment, East Hampton is wrapping up, and it will end right now. Our contract ends in June 30th. FY 18. FY 19, we were just funded for an FY 19, which is, we can talk about it, but it's not really technically part of this hearing. So the 19 will fund the Maple Street part of the project, and then we will be talking about the FY 20 application, which is the second part of this meeting. So that's kind of where we're at. And the other thing I wanted to mention is that this is the performance hearing. Every application requires that we do two public hearings. One at the beginning, which is FY 20, which is the beginning of the application, and then we do a performance hearing once you get the money, if you get, if you're funded, if the town, if the city is funded. So this is the performance hearing. This is the second public hearing for the FY 18. And then if we get FY 20 money, we'll do a performance hearing 18 months down the road or so. So that's CDUG in a very quick, very brief nutshell. But just in case you were wondering why are we doing two hearings tonight, what all that means. Any questions on that or the project?
I'd like to know what's being addressed on the Maple Street projection as far as improvements, between Admiral and Charles. There's a section of Maple Street that I think is being...
Yeah, so that's -- you're talking about this section right here?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that is what was just awarded to the city, and will be, crews should be out there this coming summer.
Does that include curbing and sidewalks?
Yeah, so it includes the whole, I believe, water, sewer, correct?
Water.
No, water, okay. The sewer, drainage, curbing, sidewalks, and then repainting.
And that's going to be North Hampshire and Charles.
And the sidewalks will be only where there are existing sidewalks now.
Thank you, that's what I wanted to know.
So they'll be replacing and repairing the existing sidewalks. New sidewalks will not be added.
Okay, along that stretch between Charles and Admiral on Maple Street.
Right, so it's only where there are existing sidewalks.
Okay, that was one of my biggest questions. Okay, thank you.
Does that apply to Charles as well?
There are no sidewalks on Charles Street.
Right, I mean, but is it covering the same scope, like no water, yes sewer?
Yeah, and we'll talk about that when we get into the 2020 pre-application hearing. But yes.
What about curving? Is curving there at all?
We'll address curving. On Charles, you mean, or Maple, or both?
Both, all of it, because I think it's dangerous if there isn't curving, frankly.
There will be curbs. Asphalt berms will be installed along all of the roads.
That would be similar to what you see probably on Olympia or...
We have it now. We're on to Maple, we have that.
Well, yeah, the berm. You know how they're going to be berm? It'll be similar to that if there's no curbing for a sidewalk right now.
Do you realize that on Admiral, where you have the new section done between Maple and Briggs, a lot of water collects there. I don't know why more sewer lines or whatever you call them were put in. I mean, it collects on both corners terribly, where you have -- there's a foot between the middle of the road where you can walk during a heavy rainstorm, and it's going to ultimately just peel up that pavement. I don't know why drainage wasn't put in on the ends of those streets.
Say it again.
So between Maple and Briggs, Admiral, where we just paved last year, I guess it was last year, it's terrible. The water collection is terrible along there. There's nothing to address.
That was in the green. It was part of our Phase 1 of the Neighborhood Improvement Project.
I might take photos next time, but if you're promoting pedestrian walking, it's really, really bad. And then ice builds up here, it becomes very slick, and I'm talking inches of water on both ends of that section.
That'd be good the next time it rains. Not you. A bus will come out and take some photos over there. I mean, you can't typically.
Yeah, I could do it.
Yeah. But that's good to know, though. Thank you. Any other questions, comments, concerns?
Specifically to the 2018 grant that was just wrapping up with the Olympia and North Hampshire, Admiral Street and Clark Street. If there's anyone who lived in the project neighborhood and is here tonight and has any comments or concerns? If there's no further questions with 2018 hearing, I will close that 2018 performance hearing, and we'll get into the 2020 application hearing. And I guess before we open that, as Ted said, the 2019, we're going to be starting this summer or the spring of construction on Maple Street.
So can I just off the top of the question here, as far as the whole scope of these roadway improvements? Has it given a thought, or can this be part of the funding to infill areas of these street improvements with street shaperies?
So that is not part of the grant applications that we've been applying for. It's definitely something that we can consider with the next stage of our grant application for the FY 20 grant. Unfortunately, the plans for the Maple Street have already been -- the Admiral Street neighborhood was, the plans were designed in 2014, or completed in 2014, but just with the limited amounts of funds that we get, we weren't able to do all the construction all at once. So we're still sort of working through an older set of plans. So the 2020 Community Development Block Grant, as Ted said, we are limited to $800,000 that we can apply for to the state, and we are basing that application off of the Community Development Strategy and other planning work that we've done throughout the last year. Some people were here last year. We did a strategy session. We came up with a list of 34 prioritized projects and seven goals and objectives to help guide the Community Development Block Grant process over the next, you know, four years. And if anyone wants to take a look at it, it's also available online on our website. You can take a look at it, you can comment, take a look at the strategies. But based on that meeting, other planning charades and things that have happened over the last year, the state guidance on what we can apply for, and funding conversations, we narrowed down the proposed application to four areas. The first would be a planning study, public infrastructure planning study for the new city neighborhood, which is a neighborhood bounded by Parsons Street, Ferry Street, Everett Street, and Emerald Place. It's been identified through, Diane can probably tell us a little bit more about it, but looking at the surface conditions, the surface street conditions in that neighborhood, it's been identified as needing infrastructure improvement. And the planning study will help us understand what is going on below the surface with regards to water lines, sewer lines, drain lines, other utilities, drainage issues that are going on in the neighborhood, looking at pedestrian connectivity. We can put in street trees into that as well. And from that study, we'll then identify future grant -- we'll identify the areas that we need to, that need the construction funds, and will apply, it'll form the basis of future grant applications. The second project that we'll be working on is the fourth and final phase of the Admiral Street Neighborhood Improvement Project, which would be Charles Street, shown in the yellow on that middle board. Then we'll continue with the Housing Rehabilitation Program and adding a new program for aging in place for seniors in our community who are over the age of 65 and live in a home that they own. So Ted can talk more about the specifics of some of those programs, and then we'll open it up to comments and questions.
Sure. I'll just be brief on that. I'll leave for questions. The one I wanted to touch on particularly was the Aging in Place program. So this is new in the sense of using CDUG funds for this type of program. We, the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, has worked with AGWAM over the past year, developing a similar type of program, and East Hampton I know is interested in trying to have that similar model and bring it here, maybe with some tweaks based on what we've seen over the past year, programmatic tweaks. In general, it's worked pretty well, but there's some administrative things here and there that we can definitely work on. So basically, it's, in some sense, it's similar to the Housing Rehab, excuse me, Housing Rehab program in the sense that it's, you're doing work, in this case, in the interior mostly of a home. There are differences, whereas the Housing Rehab program is a deferred payment loan program up to $35,000, $40,000, depending if it's by paint. This would be a grant program, which is why it can only, why we're only talking $5,000. DHCB and then up to HUD there. When it comes to housing rehab, they really want to see it as, I mean, they can be deferred payment loans, but they really want to see them as loans, so there's some sort of recapture if a house is sold within a certain number of years. So the, in the past year, or two or three, they started to be a little more lenient, and that's why we're looking at this actual straight-up grant program rather than a loan program for the ages, only for the aging in place, and again, only probably up to $5,000. And again, it would be for, you know, simpler things like stair threats, dead bolts, putting smoke detectors, that kind of stuff. So it could be a lot less than that amount, but we would, that's what this program would be. I think it would be beneficial for East Hampton. I think it would be beneficial for a lot of places. And it wouldn't have the burden of putting a lien on that property since it's a program.
So would it cover something such as changing your door knobs from being grab knobs to brake bars?
Yeah, we would do something like that. So we would have, we have a list on it, but we have a list of those types of things that we would provide for people if they were applying. So it would be a, you know, you'd have to be 65 or older, and then you'd have to be in income support, which is a good structure. And then we have what would be available for that type of program. But yes, I know that is one of the things.
Yeah, I know that's one of the things that sometimes makes it easier.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And again, it's not a lot, so it's little things, but, you know, anything that may do. Let's see if I want to mention anything else on any of these other projects. Well, I'll just wait for questions, actually.
I am currently the treasurer and one of the founding board members of an organization here in East Hampton called East Hampton Neighbors, which is basically the same as North Hampton Day does, but for East Hampton. Is there any way that we could partner in this, since we will be starting this spring, starting to offer services to senior citizens specifically for doing many of these kinds of improvements to help aging in place? If we can work out some sort of a partnership arrangement, can any of this funding go toward the administrative support of our organization, since we're doing the same thing as you guys are trying to do regarding aging in place?
Right, right, right. So two answers to your question. The first part of it, yes, I think I am aware of your program, and I think it would be beneficial to work on this together on some level.
Sure.
And we can talk, so this application is due March 6th, just so everybody's on the same page with that, so we can talk over the next month or so, and maybe we can figure out at least preliminary way of kind of working together towards this.
I'll see you at the end and exchange information.
Administrative, you know, I will answer the administrative question. It's a little tough at this stage. It may be something that we can look at in subsequent years, only because while it's a month off, there's a whole process. You're a registered nonprofit, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so there's a whole process we'd have to go through. We have to put a full RFP ahead of time, which we can do, and we can talk about that going forward, but it's just as a timing issue for this. Doesn't mean we can't work together.
Sure.
On some level, then we can look down the road, maybe the city and people down the road about how we can better work.
Absolutely.
Yeah, let's talk afterwards.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that or any of these other? You didn't get the sheets or the backing, grab one on the way out too, but just gives a brief overview of what we're looking at for this round. And obviously, we'll come again, we'll do this next year, we'll do it all again, yes.
I was wondering what the timing is looking like for the Charles Street improvements?
So if it's, it's going to be a little while. Let's put it that way. So if it's, application is due March, we usually don't hear until, usually best case is July 2020, and then by the time we're looking at 21, spring slash summer to do it, by the time all the stuff is signed. Oh, thank you for looking at the paper. That reminds me. So there is, if anyone is interested in the Aging in Place program, there is more information as it hand out back there, but also to actually, we have waitlists for our Housing Rehab and then for the Aging in Place, we would have a waitlist too. Obviously, it's not a guarantee of anything, but it shows that there's interest from the city, the state level. So if anybody's interested or knows people that are interested, I have those Aging in Place and the Housing Rehab forms back there, and they're just, they're simple. You can just fill them out if you're interested, or we know people that are interested. They come to our office, and then we just keep a waitlist of people. If there's money available, we qualify all the hoops that you have to go through, and we...
With regard to the income limits that are listed for the two programs, is that after-tax income or grossing?
It is. I believe it's listed as grossing, correct me if I'm wrong. Do you know? Off the top of your head. I think it's grossing.
I think it's gross.
Yeah, gross. Almost said gross, yes.
I think if I can add a couple quick notes about, especially the Aging in Place. So I think the way that we're trying to, this is trying, trying it as a pilot program for this first round of the mini-grants, you know, $5,000. We had, we have had conversations with Brendan at the Council on Aging, and so, you know, through his work and his department, there are people, we're trying to, trying to make sure that as we pilot this program, that there would be people out there to help fill out applications and understand the income limits. And so this is why it's going to be a pilot, is see if we can build the administrative function and get, I mean, the ideal scenario is that we get a waiting list after this first pilot program to show the state that this is, you know, a viable option in need. And one of the reasons why we picked this is because the Council on Aging did a study in East Hampton, and it really showed that although it seems like they're small projects, they're actually pretty important for people with these kind of minor changes to their house. They could stay, you know, for a period of time, and that's definitely something that we're trying to do and focus on. And then I think just about the new city infrastructure. So as we wrap up this sort of multiple-year program in Admiral Street, you know, New City was looked at because it's one of our oldest neighborhoods, and the way it's configured and some of the, you know, it's a lot of sort of original infrastructure. So what we're trying to do is with the planning assessment is do the inventory and understand what could be upgraded. And then what we think we see is an opportunity to spend multiple years using this block grant money to do those improvements after this. So the phasing at Admiral Street worked pretty well. Takes a long time, but it's a great way to sort of focus on an area and systematically upgrade the infrastructure, so that was important. And I think in terms of the area where we're trying to look at the improvements around One Ferry Street, there's a new, there's a new road being constructed and a new roundabout, and the idea is that although the block grant funding may not be the best source for Parsons and Ferry, but if we can concentrate those improvements and ultimately connect back down to where the Ferry Street would stop, you know, that's a concerted effort. I think Ameri spoke about wanting to address the intersection at Parsons and Ferry. So we look at this, and the block grant is not necessarily the best source for that intersection, but the surrounding neighborhood is. So we're looking at ways to address the Parsons and Ferry Street intersection at the same time, you know, in the future. So that's a kind of a concerted effort.
I just want to pick up on that. The reasons why the block grant funds are not suitable is because under the federal guidelines, the Community Development Block Grant funds can only be used for one of three national objectives. The first one being that the majority of the beneficiaries are either low to moderate income individuals or families. The second objective is for the elimination of slum and blight, and the third national objective is for emergency, like disaster response type thing. So when we're looking at these neighborhoods, we've been, we send out income surveys to all of the residents in the neighborhood, and it's important that we get the income surveys back because those show the... surveys back, because those show the Department of Housing and Community Development that we are targeting a neighborhood that we've done our due diligence, and the majority of those residents in those neighborhoods are, meet those national objectives with a low to moderate income, and that we're providing resources to neighborhoods that don't have as much as other neighborhoods in the city. And so, the Ferry Street and Parsons Street are collector streets, and they serve a much wider neighborhood, so it's hard to show that on those specific streets that, you know, that the, the streets qualify those income levels. The interior of the neighborhoods and that, and the new city neighborhood, we've done some survey work, and those, some of those, most of those streets in that neighborhood do qualify. As the neighborhood changes, as we do the construction projects phased over many years, we might find that a street that we, that did qualify, no longer qualifies, and if that's the case, we won't be able to use community development block grant funds on that, on that area, but we'll look to other streets and parts of that neighborhood. Other, any other questions? Comments, concerns?
Well, I, it was good to hear that One Ferry Street is, is in this realm, so to speak, and based on what's going down there and the traffic that it's going to generate, there is probably going to be some effect of some of the neighborhoods in the New City area around, so we're hoping that, you know, that at least some of those impacts may be considered in whatever mitigation you can kind of offer in the, in the neighborhoods surrounding One Ferry Street. No, it's no, no question that One Ferry Street is going to, is going to have a positive, I think, positive impact development, economic impact on the area. And that in itself kind of generates a lot more activity, and, which, you know, may have some effect on, on the surrounding neighborhoods, and I guess, you know, I would look at it as how that might affect it in terms of pedestrian circulation, or how, what, what you might do in those neighborhoods to enhance the pedestrian circulation so that One Ferry Street is, is a, is a vital element of that, of that part of the neighborhood too. Just a thought.
And I think the, the planning study that we're putting together, it will look at the intersections with Parsons Street and Ferry Street, and where the side streets connect to Parsons Street, or where the Emerald Place connects to Ferry Street. It just might be that we can't fund future improvements with the block grant funding, but we, as part of the study, we will be looking at the edges and how it connects to So, no more further questions? Just want to ask to make sure that no one in the room objects to our application to DHCB with these four projects? So, for the course of the hearing, I just want to remind everyone to please sign in to both sign-in sheets. Thank you very much for taking time out of your busy days to, evenings to come in and spend a half hour talking about community development and how our plans are toward hopefully enhancing the community. Thank you all very much.
Thanks, thanks so much.
Thank you.